Good evening and welcome to our March 1st record study session. This evening we have three items on the agenda. The first agenda which everybody is waiting for is Tobacco 21.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, at the February 2nd City Commission Study Session, the issue of changing the legal age to purchase tobacco is discussed. Commissioner listened to testimony that evening and asked that it be brought to a future City Commission Study Session. They also instructed staff to change the wording where the prohibition would be against just the purchase of tobacco and not possession, so that's reflected in your policy report, and then to also provide some model ordinance language. That takes the form in your policy report of three sections. Section 1 is definitions, which defines all of alternative nicotine products, tobacco products, and vapor products. Section 2 is essentially the content, the main content of the ordinance, which instructs retailers, wholesale dealers, to follow the ordinance as far as the prohibition to selling to anybody below 21 years of age. And section 3 is the penalties section. I would just want to note on that, we don't have to get into great discussion on this tonight. The consensus penalties in most of the model language had an escalator fine. Currently ours doesn't escalate. It's 200 each time. That's just a minor housekeeping thing that should we elect to go forward with a consensus we can discuss. That's all staff has prepared, along with the packet of letters of support or letters against that the staff received over the last couple of weeks have all been included in your packet. And I believe we have a lot of people here to discuss.
Okay. Is it agreeable with the Commission to allow people to speak?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see, I know there's people pro or anti, we heard from the pro or anti, depending on what side of the issue you are last time, but the people that weren't here last time, I ask that they go first. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
That's okay. I'd probably try to divide you into groups so the testimony doesn't get mixed up. So, is there anyone here that is anti the ordinance? Okay, if you would either form a line or one at a time step up to the podium, state your name, and roughly five minutes.
I would, I'm gonna use the word maturity, and I think I'm gonna tie that into your maturity at age 18 may not be enough maturity to where you can make an informed, intelligent decision on whether you should buy tobacco or not. And with having said that, the private sector believes that you don't have enough maturity to make the right decisions and do the right things until you're 25. That's automobile insurance. If your rates drop when you're 25 because you're more mature and you drive safer. Next thing I want to hit is age. See, if I'm 18 or 19 and went to Iraq, I can take a bullet, maybe I can recover from that and come back home and told them I can't buy a pack of cigarettes. I personally don't feel like 18 has the maturity to where a person really knows the ins and outs on making a real informed decision on voting. And it used to be for years 21, but the government decided, we'll change that to 18 so people can vote at 18. Let's get some consistency here. Is 18 old enough? If it's not old enough, let's change everything to 21 or 25 even. Economy. The majority of the people, young people, and I did some checking on this, that go into a convenience store or whatever to buy a pack of cigarettes usually doesn't just buy a pack of cigarettes. There's more people who don't just buy a pack of cigarettes than who do just buy a pack of cigarettes. While they're there, they'll pick up a soft drink or some chips or some snack. You're doing two things here if you were to put this into effect. One, you're penalizing the business owners, but competition is tough enough. Number two, you're taking money away from the city. I've served 16 years altogether on this City Commission, and I don't remember a year going by to where we didn't have budget problems. Never enough revenue to deal with everything. You're taking away thousands of dollars in sales tax. I, for one, would not, if I was 18, 19, 20, I would not get in my car and pull into a convenience store here in Leavenworth and buy a soft drink and a snack, get back in my car, and then drive to Lansing or across the river and buy my cigarettes. I'd just buy them all, everything together, out of the city of Leavenworth. Not gonna make two different stops. So you're hurting the economy. This is something that can't be enforced because anybody 18 can merely drive to Lansing, cross the river, or if they qualify, they can go up to Fort Leavenworth and buy, if they qualify to buying the PX in the first place. Last, I'd just like to point this out, and some of you may agree with me and some of you may not. The time I served, I had one thing I kept in mind. If an ordinance came up to be dealt with, and we're gonna put it on the books, and this was going to protect you from a hardship that I might put on you or someone else might, or from any type of harm, I'm gonna vote yes on it, to protect you from me or me from you. I'm never gonna vote, never did vote yes, on any sort of an ordinance that protects me from myself. Maybe it's arrogance on my part. I don't want to admit that government's smarter than I am because I don't think they are. Look around at our economy. Look at the state this country's in right now. You get too many people, get into the do-good mode, I don't know if they wanted to pass something and put a feather in their cap, but look what I passed. Bottom line is, we've got enough stuff on the books at federal, state, and local levels that protect us from ourselves. And I don't think that the government's, that's not the responsibility. Government's responsibility, a local government's responsibility is protection, emergency protection, safety. That's police, that's fire, there's things like that. Another thing is infrastructure. Streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, safe sewers, things like this. Stay out of the private sector, and this is something that you can't enforce. And I just heard, and I didn't know this until I heard it just now, you're gonna burn the business owner if they happen to sell a pack of cigarettes or something to someone that's under 21, but you're not gonna do this. Same 18, 19-year-old can walk up and down the street smoking all day long, and no law gives that, as long as you didn't buy them here. So what you're saying in capital letters is, go somewhere else and make your purchases. Don't spend the money in Leavenworth. Don't create tax, sales tax revenue for us. So it's a maturity thing. You don't have the sense to make your own decisions. It's a economic thing. You're pushing people out of the city, and we need to get off of the protectionism. We don't. Like I say, some of you may not agree with me, but we don't need to be passing protectionism laws to protect us from ourselves. If you're an adult, and if you're considered an adult at 18, you ought to have the right to make stupid decisions as long as you're not affecting someone else. Now, with having said all that, I smoke. I'm over 18, obviously, so it doesn't bother me in the least bit. It's a principle of it. And I would recommend anybody at age 10, 18, 27, 53, or whatever, don't smoke. You're better off not to. That's not the point here tonight, though. The point is, you're putting something on the books that's gonna hurt the economy. You're telling 18-year-olds, you can go die for your country, but you can't make the simple decision on whether you wanna buy a pack of cigarettes. So we need to get off of the protectionism and let people do as they will, what pleases them in life, as long as it's not causing a hardship on someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. I'll state again, please try to limit it to five minutes.
Did I overfive?
Yeah.
What do you think?
Sorry.
My name's Dave Penn. I'm the manager for 7-Eleven. And if you pass a law stating being 21, that will hurt our business. Because 18, 19, 20, 21-year-old, that's about a third of our business up there at 7-Eleven. Yes, ma'am, that is. And if you take that away from us, that's gonna really put us under. And when kids say, okay, I can't buy here, I'll just go someplace else. And like Mr. Urban said, when they can put that uniform on, our boys and girls both, protect our country, protect me and you, they don't have that right to say, I can. I don't have to, but I can. I started smoking cigarettes when I was six years old. I'm 60 years old now. At times I wished I'd never started, but that's my choice. It's not somebody telling me, I can or I can't. And if you're 18, you can vote. If you can, at 18, you can go be a stock car racer, a drag racer, be anything you want to be. You can be a baseball player. But that's your choice. That's their choice, what they want. It's not me gonna be, I can't tell you, you can't do this. Because I'm not, it's not my, not my place to tell you what to do. It's your choice to make that choice. So I, myself personally, I don't think you should pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for clarification for you, sir. You stated that 31/3 of your business-
About a third of our business, yes.
Third of your business are kids, the 18 and 21-year-olds that buy cigarettes?
Buy cigarettes. They come in and they'll buy a cigarette, pack cigarettes, they'll buy a cigar, and then also they'll come over and buy a soda.
But 1/3 of them, 1/3 of your business buys cigarettes?
Buy cigarettes, yes, sir.
1/3, 18 and 21-year-old people are-
About a third of our business, yes.
30 out of 100 people are 18 and 21 that buy cigarettes?
We have 18, 19-year-olds that come off the base and buy tobacco, because at times they don't have their dip up there on post. They have to come off post to get it. So that's where our business is coming off the post.
So 30% of your business are 18 and 21-year-olds that buy tobacco, among other things?
Among other things, yes, sir.
That just-
And then when you pass that law to say, they can't come in my store and buy tobacco, they're gonna go someplace that, like Mr. Urban said, they're gonna go across the bridge. They're gonna go up to Asheson, they're gonna go to Lansing. They're not gonna care about spending that extra little bit of gas money to get what they want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's James Van Bever. I work at one of the local vape shops, and I can tell you that I probably only do about 10% of my business with the younger, but I'll keep mine short. I have a petition. I have about 200 signatures, just from sitting in my shop for a week. I didn't have to bribe anybody, nothing like that. But I can tell you, most of my customers who are 45, 50, 60, they will tell you stories. And they didn't go to the store and buy their cigarettes, they stole them from their parents. That's how they start. Making this law is not going to stop people from smoking. They're going to find another way to do it. That's really all I have.
Thank you. If you give it to the court, please.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Damian Owen. I'm the store manager at Vape Trip. I'm a local tobacco vendor. I have a couple of things that I would like you to consider. My biggest thing is the economic side of it. We have passed a very, not you all, but the state of Kansas, so we have some history to see what our customer base will do, given an option to purchase here or to get their products at a different location, and that was the 50 cent tax bill. There's 111 tobacco shops in the northeast Kansas area. I have the documentation on what their sales are. Six months after, they're down about 10.9% per shop. That's strictly because people have not stopped. They have taken their dollars, they have taken them out of Leavenworth, and they've taken them over to Missouri. One of our bigger issues with passing this is I believe that that 18 to 21 is not gonna stop smoking. They will go to the facilities across the bridge that are unincorporated, which will always be 18 to 21. They're not under any muni, so they will always have that option. This 10%, which is a tax reduction for the state of Kansas, will, which affects our schools, which affects our roads, and I think we all read every month, the deficit that we are incurring based on the lack of tax revenue coming into the state of Kansas could push us another 5, 10% I would believe. I don't know if I have a 30% tax, sorry, a 30% revenue flow from just the young folk, but they do buy everything, and they come into shop two, three, four times a night looking for things to do. They're not always buying tobacco, but they, they are mobile, especially in the evening. It would affect not just my facility, but it would affect all 111 facilities that are already at an average of 11% downfall in their sales revenues in the last six months. I would encourage that we find other avenues to get people to slowly change smoking. I'm a non-smoker, and I understand that smoking isn't the prime opportunity for people's health. I do believe that we, as a community, make a decision when someone's an adult, and when they are an adult, I think we need to stand by those folks, and stand by their decisions, and have those hands out to help them when they fall, because they're gonna fall when they're young. Shoot, I fall now, and I'm old. But taking an adverse direction on attacking, and I hate to say attacking, but this, you know, only finding the merchants, you know, they can walk in my store with a vape, me thinking they're of legal age, where did they get it from, and they're under 21, and I'm gonna be fined. That's gonna be a very difficult, difficult area to mandate, you know, seeing someone for three years and just getting caught over and over and over, not meaning to. I mean, our goal is not to sell underage. Our goal is to sell to legal age merchant, patrons to our shops. And these folks, you know, we've become our family, and they come in all the time, so not only will we lose the sales revenue, but I'm sure many, many shops are gonna get caught under 21 thinking that they're abiding by the law. I would encourage you not to vote for this. If you would like to see the documentation of the 111 tobacco shops, I do have a copy for each of you.
Yeah, just give it to the court. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Chinua Van Bever, and I'm a nurse, and I work for the VA. I won't state the obvious. We already know that if they're 18 and they can go to work, that you guys already have heard that a billion times. They can vote. They break the law, you will charge them as an adult. They'll go to, I have a 19-year-old son. He doesn't smoke. I don't smoke. He vapes. He doesn't use nicotine. But it's kind of a pop culture, but they're even like trying to use vape for people to quit smoking instead of Chantex and nicotine gum and stuff, because it's not good for you. It's bad. Everybody knows smoking's bad, but if you're gonna treat them like adults, then they need to be able to make their own decisions. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Danny Zekmark. You got a nice tan.
Thank you. It's not bad either.
First of all, I'm against smoking, just so you understand. I kid people on a daily basis, you know, it's proven fact that nicotine's gonna kill you, but I'm gonna go out in minus 20 below and smoke anyway. I don't personally understand that particular thing. However, I have, I have an issue with more government control telling me what I can do and what I can't do. And I personally would like to hear from each commissioner that wants to raise the age, why in their heart that they think that's such a big issue for Leavenworth, Kansas, to have an ordinance where people at 18 can't purchase cigarettes, when Leavenworth has a whole bunch more bigger issues than smoking at 18? Because we need a lot of business in Leavenworth, and there's a lot more issues, and I hate wasting the commissioner's valuable time with such as, I think, a small issue about government control, when we have much bigger issues in Leavenworth that need to be handled. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
How's it going tonight? Before I get started here, am I allowed to ask questions of you guys?
Why don't you pull the mic up just a little bit?
Give us your name.
Can you hear me? My name is Adam Johnson. Am I allowed to ask questions tonight of you guys?
I don't think so, because it's gonna turn into a very time-consuming.
Understood.
We'll probably answer your question in our discussion.
Well, my name is Adam Johnson. I'm actually the owner of Rocky Mountain Vaping up on Metropolitan. We're a couple of doors down from those guys. I'm happy to report that, hey, I paid about $25,000. My numbers are not exactly accurate here, but roughly $25,000 in taxes over the last 12 months to the state of Kansas. I'm sure you guys get a portion of that. So, you know, I understand the economic thing has been beaten to death. Like the other vape shop employee, you know, I also can echo that, actually, the vast majority of our customer base is roughly about 35 years old and male. You know, I understand that we have been progressively raising ages for smoking, drinking, the whole nine yards, you know, since 1930s roughly. And we have seen a decline in the smoking rate. It has been pretty substantial over the last couple of years, as I understand it. And I think, you know, that's a testimony to both, you know, teaching our kids that smoking is very dangerous, the whole, you know, it will kill you. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt in anyone's mind that it is extremely dangerous. But, you know, I guess, without a response, the question I would pose to you is, you know, who controls your diet? And is your diet absolutely what the American Heart Association recommends? You know, and I think that it would behoove, you know, the city council here to consider vaping and tobacco separately, because there's vastly different research in both of those categories. Tobacco, like I said, we're all pretty much under the impression that it is very dangerous. Vaping, on the other hand, there's a lot of evidence to support the other. The American Heart Association itself, in fact, endorses vaping. The British government has done a pretty significant amount of research on vaping, and they've actually found a pretty drastic decrease in the levels of tobacco consumption across the board. You know, I'm not medically certified in any way, shape, or form. I was at one point. Albuterol inhalers are what we use for asthma, things like that. The juice that we use actually contains propylene glycol, which is found in the albuterol inhaler, vegetable glycerin, which is found in the albuterol inhaler, food flavorings that we're encountering every single day, and nicotine, which, you know, we know is systemically will raise your blood pressure. I'm sorry, I'm shaky because I'm nervous here. Apologize, I'm a terrible public speaker. But, you know, we know that it raises your blood pressure, that it does put you at risk for heart disease. You know, at the same time, we also know that it's noncarcinogenic, it does not cause cancer. You know, this is from the Food and Drug Administration, you know, at the highest levels of government. Also recently, over the last two weeks, I believe, the Mayo Clinic, which, you know, tends to be one of the more recognized names in the medical community, found that pre and post-op outcomes were significantly better if people were vaping as opposed to smoking. We have to consider that. We're taking money out of Leavenworth. I'm already facing a bottle tax. So, state of Kansas says that a bottle that used to cost $20 now costs $26. It looks significantly less attractive to vape rather than smoke. You know, I'm now being told like, hey, you know, you can't even vape in your own shop over in our shop in Colorado. We have the same problem there. Basically what happened was, you know, legislation almost identical to this was passed, and we ended up falling under Clean Air Act. So, $60,000 HVAC system that goes specialized to a room that's no more than 20% of our retail space, you know, had to be installed. Like, I would love to sink $60,000 into product and to pay you guys more. I can't do that if I'm saving up for, you know, for something that in my mind is not needed.
Can you sort of wind it up?
Absolutely. And I would definitely encourage you guys to separate vaping and smoking, you know, to realize that, you know, no one has the right to really control us unless we do something wrong to other people. You know, we're taking a significant risk here by just blindly considering vaping the tobacco product and by saying, everything's, you know, all in one book. If comes out of your mouth that's bad. I believe carbon dioxide is the same way. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ashton Lunsford, and I work for one of the local vape shops. I turned 18 in January, but I've been smoking since I was 16. Vaping has really opened up new doors for me. I'm a lot healthier as a person. I can do a lot more with my life. My breathing has improved even. Vaping and cigarettes are two very different aspects, two very different even types of If you pass this law, think, think of the economy. Think of how many jobs you are deleting out of people's lives. Even me, I will lose my job if you guys pass this law. And all of the other 18, 19, 20-year-olds that work at gas stations even, you know, they won't be able to sell cigarettes. They'll have to get someone else out of the back who is 21 or older, say, hey, I need you to come do this. After a while, whoever does that isn't one of them gonna do that anymore, and they're gonna fire them. What are people supposed to do? If anything, why not separate cigarettes and vaping? Make vaping to where, you know, kids are gonna smoke. They're gonna do it whether you pass this law or not. But if you wanna do that to make kids healthier, to restrict smoking, then keep vaping at the age of 18. Four ingredients in our vape juice that is found in everyday food, you encounter it every single day by eating, drinking water, drinking soda, versus 7,000 chemicals that are in a cigarette. And they're FDA-approved. I would all just like you to think about it before you make your final decision tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, what'd you say was FDA-approved? I didn't quite catch that.
Cigarettes, in general, cigarettes.
I don't, never mind. I don't, they're FDA-approved, and they're not against it anymore.
Okay. Is there anyone else that opposes the ordinance and desires to speak? If not, we'll shut that area down and we'll take the ones that support the ordinance.
Do you guys have a way to show the PowerPoint? Maybe?
Kind of, yeah, but is it online or is it?
No, no, it's loaded on. It's on slide drive.
Do you have a projector?
Yeah.
Right there. You're gonna need to sit at the table. Dr. Whitlow, you're gonna need to sit at the table to dance the slides.
Oh, to advance?
Yeah.
Can somebody advance it? I can do it. Okay. I'm Rick Whitlow. I'm a general internist in Lansing right now. I practiced in Leavenworth for a long time. I'm a former Army officer, and I'm here not by the invitation of anybody except for Mark Prisinger and some folks in Kansas City who asked me to come speak to this. So, next slide. So Tobacco 21 is not a government initiative, first of all. It's a citizen initiative that started about five years ago, predominantly on the east coast. The biggest one is in Massachusetts, and we'll talk about that a little bit. It includes not only cigarettes, but loose tobacco products, any form of nicotine, chewing tobacco, snuff, flavored tobaccos, the whole gamut. It's involved over 135 cities right now. The entire state of Hawaii has passed an ordinance that they will not sell tobacco products under the age of 21. The Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, and Army have all signed off on that ordinance in the state of the, all of the PXs in Hawaii, okay? Philip Morris in- Philip Morris, in 1986, made this statement. Raising the legal minimum age for cigarette purchasers to 21 could gut our key young adult market. Now, why would they say that? Why would they say that? Okay, next. Smoking makes you look grown up until you start smoking, and then you just really look old. Next. It's important, in 2015, the Institute of Medicine issued a report that said that by raising the age to smoking to 21 could reduce teenage and adolescent tobacco consumption by 25%. That's huge. In Needham, Massachusetts, five years ago, they started this initiative. They have decreased the rate of adolescent and teenage smoking by 46%. I'll show you some numbers later to put that into perspective. But asking adults who've smoked and the adults who have been up here that talked about smoking, the majority of them wish they had never smoked before. I've asked all my patients the last month, as I have for 20 years. All of them wish they had never stopped, started smoking. And they start smoking for a number of reasons, and they start smoking at a number of different ages. Next. 80% of adult smokers started before they were age of 21. That's huge. A first cigarette before the age of 18 predicts a twofold increase in adult smokers, lifelong adult smokers. 90% of those buying tobacco products for minors, so kids under 18 are under 21. That's the focus of this. It's not to tell people they can't smoke. I would love for nobody to ever smoke again, but this ordinance will not do that. We don't have any misconceptions it will do that. If a kid wants to smoke, they'll smoke. This is a simple, low-hanging fruit barrier that will help prevent adolescents from obtaining access to tobacco products. What 16-year-old hangs out with somebody who's over 21? Not many. They hang out with kids their own age. High school sophomores and freshmen hang out with high school seniors. They have access, they can start smoking.
Do you have the smacks about that?
I do have the smacks, Danny. I'll give them all to you. Okay? I have them all.
I mean, so do you have all the other facts up there? Please make sure we get those facts.
I can, I have facts for all of them. Okay? Thank you.
Next. Okay, adolescent brains, if you want to talk science, are incredibly sensitive to nicotine. It has nothing to do with tobacco. It's nicotine. The argument tonight has been vaping is not tobacco. It's not tobacco, I agree with that. But vaping has nicotine, and adolescent brains are incredibly sensitive to nicotine at much lower doses. It causes permanent remodeling of the neurons and the transmitters in the brain, and it increases their likelihood of addiction at a much, much lower consumption rate. Next.
I'm sorry, sir. Quick question for you.
Wait, sorry, sorry.
Would you say that it's true of caffeine?
Sir, hold it. This is not going to be a question and answer period between the speakers. So, the speaker, go ahead, make your report to us, and then if we have any more questions, we can go from there.
Thank you. 3,818 18-year-olds and younger start smoking every day. 2,100 of those every day become lifelong smokers. At the current rates of adolescent smoking, 5.6 million of today's youth will die of a tobacco-related illness. That's one in 13 of our kids under the age of 18 right now in our communities. That's a lot of people. Tobacco kills. It causes COPD, it causes lung cancer, it causes every other type of cancer that a human body can get, in addition to cardiovascular and other vascular diseases. Next. We would never think about raising money based on tobacco, would we? I mean, there's also economics on the downside of that in terms of healthcare costs. Next. Okay? It's not just cigarettes. Cigarettes, cigars, pipes, roll-your-own tobacco, those are obvious sources of tobacco products. But electronic cigarettes, vaping, and hookahs are all initiator products for an adolescent brain. They're cool, they're fun, they taste good, they're not tobacco, you can do them almost anywhere, they're not regulated nearly as much, but they get an adolescent brain addicted to nicotine. Next. Who's smoking? Kids in high school smoke. The more educated you are, the less likely you are to smoke. Simple fact. Next. Predominantly males smoke. Those typically are white males. Okay? Hispanics smoke more than blacks, interestingly. Next. These numbers are kind of staggering. If you look at the males in high school that smoke, about a fourth of them use tobacco products. There is some overlap between the electronic cigarette use, but that's almost 40% of the high school population are experimenting and using some form of a nicotine product. Next. It's not just high school. Middle school has the same problem, although not quite as much. Next. Somebody said that tobacco use is down. There's no doubt. We've been working on tobacco cessation for 30-plus years, and it's been working. The problem is in 2007, when we started using vaping products and other forms of nicotine delivery, the use of that product went up. And so, we're undoing all of our tobacco cessation efforts for 30-plus years, getting people to stop smoking by starting kids younger on nicotine products, which they just frankly don't have the capacity to make that decision. Next. Hookahs are kind of a water pipe thing. I'd never heard of it until I started doing this, but a lot of kids that smoke hookahs already smoke tobacco and marijuana products regularly. They tend to be white, a little bit higher economic, social structure. Next. And that's kind of a composite. If you look at those, all of the bars are pretty much even, except for, you know, cigarettes and the electronic products and the smokeless stuff. Next. I like cartoons, but smokers die. Next. There's cost to tobacco and nicotine use, not only in health, work attendance and absenteeism and economics and death. A lot of the speakers have talked about economics. Let me show you some of the other side of the story of economics.
You guys, five minutes are up.
This doesn't cost anything for the city to initiate. Okay? Currently, in the United States, it costs $289 billion or more treating tobacco and nicotine-related things. Almost half a million lives are lost every year for a business employing a smoker. Count on about $5,800 more in annual health insurance and health-related expenses. If you smoke, an average cost, and I don't know what an average cost of tobacco is, I assumed it was $7. 365 days with a modest interest rate for 25 years is $110,000 of retirement savings that you put up in smoke. Next. Are we restricting rights? Are they rights or privileges? We don't let adolescents drink until they're 21 because they make bad decisions. We might not let them drive before they're 16. Personally, I think that may be higher than whoever said 25. I think they're probably right. We don't sell firearms to kids under 21 because they make bad decisions. We don't sell marijuana to kids under 21 in states that allow marijuana because they make bad decisions. There's books that are listed by the American Library Association that are banned for reading in public libraries because we think that they're bad for kids. We have driving laws, we have road laws, we have public behaviors that we outlaw. They don't hurt anybody, but we think they hurt other people. So, what is the appropriate age of responsibility? That was brought up, and I think that's an excellent, excellent point. What is the appropriate age of responsibility to purchase tobacco products? Adolescents have a right to our protection. Next. Navy Rear Admiral Turner, or Fuller, made this comment. If someone is young enough to fight for their country, they should be free from addiction to an addictive drug. I think that's probably true. If you look at, from the health perspective, soldiers that smoke have better, or don't smoke, have better vision, better hearing, better teeth, better fitness and aerobic capacity, they have a better fighting capacity, and they heal better after their wounds. Next. Like I said, in Hawaii, all four services have honored the Hawaii restriction to sell products under 21. Please seriously consider this legislation to change the purchase of tobacco and nicotine-related products to 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Walker. I didn't really intend to come up here this evening, but I felt it necessary to make sure the record was accurate. Earlier, it was stated that the American Heart Association endorses e-cigarettes. Nothing could be further from the truth. I say that as an employee of the American Heart Association, be happy to share our scientific statement with you on e-cigarettes. We absolutely do not endorse those products. So, I just want to make that perfectly clear. The other point I'd like to get across, and the doctor did a phenomenal job of talking about this, and we've had a lot of discussion about the kids between 18 and 21. And in some respects, this is about them, but in a larger respect, it's about kids younger than that. The age of initiation of smoking in this country is continuing to go down, meaning kids are starting to smoke at earlier and earlier ages. It's now approaching 13 years of age. There's one thing that I've heard tonight that I think everybody in this room can agree on. The use of cigarettes and tobacco products is deadly, and we shouldn't be doing it. Tobacco 21 is an opportunity to try to break that social chain of access for kids. If we have kids in our high schools that are 14, 15, and 16, they have ready access to 18-year-olds who currently are able to go out and buy those tobacco products and share them with their friends. That's how many of the kids are getting these products today. Generally speaking, by the time a kid is 21, they're not usually hanging out or associating with kids that are 16, 15, 14. So, this is about breaking that social chain of access. So, yes, we are talking about 18- and 21-year-olds. But we've all agreed, they shouldn't really be smoking, none of us should be smoking. But more importantly, this is about the youth that are younger than that age that currently have access to these products. It may be illegal, it may be immoral, it may be a lot of things, but the fact is, they have ready access to these products. So, anything we can do to help break that chain and prevent them becoming lifelong smokers is a very important thing to do, and it is a strong component of a tobacco prevention strategy in our country and in our city and in our state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Scott Hall with the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce. Thank you all for giving us some time tonight. Just a couple of things I wanted to address on behalf of the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce. In an article published in the Public Health Policy Brief titled "Retail Impact of Raising Tobacco Sales: Age to 21 Years," and I quote, "Overall, 2% of tobacco sales is attributed to those younger than 21 years." That is an article that was published within the last two years specifically on the economic and business impact of Tobacco 21. The second thing I wanted to address was the issue of importance. The importance of this was questioned by one of the comments that was made previously. By the estimation of the Healthcare Foundation of Greater Kansas City, the Tobacco 21 efforts that have passed thus far in the Greater Kansas City area has saved the lives of 500 kids ages 15 to 17 in Greater Kansas City. I can think of nothing that this group could do that is more important than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeremy Greenamart, thanks for having me on the, last time I was here, went down the list of the local cities who had already passed the ordinance. Since that time, which is only 30 days, you have the City of Alanya, population 133,000 people, has passed the Tobacco 21 legislation. Gladstone, population 26,000 people, passed the legislation. And my question tonight is the same question as I had last time. Which side of this issue is Leavenworth going to be on? Are you going to be on the leading side and taking a stand, or are you going to sit back and just wait for it to happen? Because, as it is today, this issue is also being considered by Overland Park, Leewood, Lenexa, Prairie Village, Bonner Springs, and our neighbors to the south, Lansing, Kansas. I certainly understand the economic argument, but this situation doesn't exist in a vacuum of just Leavenworth. And pretty soon, all of these places that people are going to sneak off to to buy their cigarettes is the way I can, or if everything keeps trending the way it is, they're all going to, we're going to be surrounded by cities that are Tobacco 21. So, the question to me is, which side of the issue are we going to be on? Thank you.
I'm a little bit shorter than the rest of them, so give me a second to hold the mic. Hi, my name is Van Eubank. I'm a recent graduate of Leavenworth High School. And I'm not sure if I'm the last one speaking, but if I am, that's kind of appropriate because I'm more middle-of-the-fence than anything. I have some statistics here, but I also have some one-on-one experience with several different people, not only in our area where this law has already been passed, but also in places like New York and Chicago where the legislation is either being, has already been passed or looking at being passed. I'll start off by saying that I'm 18 years old, I'm a non-smoker, and I've lost two close relatives to lung cancer that had to do with smoking. That being said, I've also spoken to many of my friends who are smokers, who have said this legislation has been passed in their area and that they can still get cigarettes easily. Maybe even without leaving their area and going somewhere else to buy them, because, yeah, they're 18, and 18 and 21-year-olds, 17 and 21-year-olds, et cetera, aren't always friends. But they're coworkers, they're neighbors, they go to the same concerts, they hang out at the same restaurants, they know each other. And I think almost all of us know that when you get desperate for something, you might ask a favor from someone you might normally not ask, or maybe not even talk to. I don't know how my friends are getting their cigarettes, or their vapes, or their hookahs, or whatever they're getting. I'm not going to ask, because honestly, I have no reason to need that information, considering that I am a non-smoker, but I do know that they are getting them. Now, I don't know from my friends that are non-smokers how this has affected them, if at all. And I don't know any of the economic information from their areas. That's not my, not my strong suit when it comes to this sort of, this sort of thing. But I do know the facts that I've gotten from the CDC, and I do know what I've heard from my friends and relatives. The facts that I've gotten from the CDC are some of the facts that you've already heard tonight, and I won't go over those ones since you've already heard them. But I also have a couple that are more interesting to me because, as was stated by several different people on both sides, smoking is lower than it's ever been, especially teen smoking and young adult smoking. I think that this can be attributed to programs like truth.org. I don't know if you guys have heard of it, but it's a really great program. They go to concerts. I know they went to Warped Tour for the past few years, which is a huge, huge event with like thousands and thousands of, especially teens and young adults, that they go to it, and they spend their money there, and they go to all of the different booths. And the truth.org booth is the only booth there where you can get anything for free or cheap. I swear to you, everything there costs 50, 60, 70 dollars. And I don't want to pay that much for a guitar pick. So, I'm going to go to the truth.org tent, and I'm going to talk to them, and I'm going to find out things I didn't know about smoking. I'm going to find out resources to quit smoking. I'm going to find out all that stuff, and I'm going to find it out from people who are in my age range. Now, they might not be my exact age. They might be 22, 25, et cetera, but they're all millennials. I know that's kind of a touchy word, but they're all millennials. And I think that one-on-one connection and the education that comes with that is more important and more effective than any law could be. Once again, that being said, I've seen the numbers, I've seen the evidence, and I've seen that this can work. But I've also been a student in a school, and I know where a lot of these numbers come from. These numbers come from, a lot of them anyway, from tests that we take on our computers, and they're all anonymous, asking us, have we smoked in the past 30 days? Have we done drugs in the past 30 days? I know it's anonymous. I know I'm not going to get found out by the cops. But I also know that not everyone believes that, and not everyone answers accurately. Does that mean that we have more people smoking or less people smoking? I couldn't say. But I know that the numbers can always be accurate. The last thing I want to touch on really quick is e-cigarettes specifically, or vapes, or whatever you want to call them. or whatever you want to call them. We have, what, three, four different vapes shops just in town, right? Something like that. And we know that this is more appealing and that teen and young adult smokers are using these more than anything else. Just off the top of my head, I remember it was e-cigarettes, then hookahs, then cigarettes, then chewing tobacco, and then everything else was less than 1% use in young adults. But if we don't want kids smoking, and I'm not saying this because I want these people kicked out of our town, I want people to lose their jobs, I'm saying if we want this to stop, why aren't we raising education while we allow these people to come into our town and sell these things? Because I haven't personally seen any education going on specifically targeted at e-cigarettes, even though we've had an increase tenfold of how much they're available. They're even available in the gas stations and the convenience stores. I think they even have them at Walmart now. And to me, if we focus on education, and if we focus on getting one-on-one with these students and giving them resources, we won't need something like this. With that, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what was your name again?
Van Eubank.
Thank you.
Anyone else that desires to speak? If not, I'm going to close the floor, and we'll go back to the commissioners for a discussion. Who wants to start? Mark?
You know, this is an issue that we've heard about twice. We've had two study sessions on it. A couple of questions that I'd have, possibly for our city attorney, and I don't think it's in the ordinance, but I don't think there's anything in the ordinance saying that if tobacco sales are restricted to those under, or 21 and over, that a person is working at a store, at a convenience store, grocery store, wherever it might be, doesn't have the right to ring up the sale.
I didn't see that in there.
Yeah, that's not in the ordinance, and I don't think that we're proposing that, so I don't see that as a concern. There's a statement about the more important issues than this, and I don't disagree with that statement, but I'm not, I don't want to downplay this issue. But I don't think this is necessarily taking the commission away from other issues. I know I'm the one that brought up this, and one of the reasons I brought it up, because I feel I'm, and I'm taking some jabs at my fellow commissioners here, that I bring up a lot of things. I've brought up a lot of things my six years here, and I, from code enforcement to sales tax rates to no littering legislation, et cetera, because sometimes I sit here and I feel that I'm force-fed an agenda by the city manager and the staff and not taking out -- we just sit there and say, "Yes, yes, yes, let's buy this, let's buy that," and our job here is to lead. And that doesn't mean that, because I propose it, it has to be, but I think it is a topic that deserves the discussion, and that's why I brought it up. Cities in the Greater Kansas City area have done it, obviously. Kansas City Unified Government of KCK, Independence Gladstone, go on and on. And I think it's time for us to have the discussion, and obviously, we have had that since December. And I think that this is a topic now that we've heard both sides, and I think we should take it to a vote. I think that we need to stand up and be counted, one way or another. If it passes, is it going to change the world? No, I do not believe that. If it fails, is it going to change the world? No, I do not believe that. If it does fail, I do believe it could, I think we'd be the first city to have it fail, but I do believe that it needs to come to a vote of the five commissioners, and we stand up and be counted on the subject. And I recommend that we do take this to a vote in our next meeting, and we'll see how it goes. Both sides have made some good arguments. I understand both sides. I understand the economics of it. I do remember some same comments years ago in the Clean Air Act, when they said, "No smoking in restaurants in Kansas or public buildings in restaurants." There was a hue and cry, saying, "We're going to lose all kinds of businesses, people are not going to come to my restaurant anymore," et cetera. I don't think that, that's, did not come to fruition, all those fears that that would happen did not happen. I can remember 20 years ago, when some airlines stopped smoking on airlines, said, "People will never do that. They'll never do that on international flights." I fly a lot internationally, and Japan Airlines in Japan, I think, probably has the highest smoking rate of any industrialized country in the world. When they said that they're going to enforce non-smoking, all Japanese and all the people said Japan Airlines could go broke because they're not going to fly on it. There's not an airline in the world, unless there's one in the interior of India, and I think there is one in the interior of India, that domestic airlines still allow smoking. And obviously, airlines have survived. So I don't think, if it does pass, that the economy's going to drop, and I don't think if it fails, that the economy's necessarily going to prosper, either way. So I do think it's a potential public health issue. I know that any 18-year-old kid worth of salt can find a pack of cigarettes if this is illegal. If they can't, they're not a very smart 18-year-old kid. I think we can all say that. And I think what this is really targeted at are those kids, 15 to 17, that younger age, that does have a friend in the 18, 19-year-old range, say, "Hey, will you go out and buy me a pack of cigarettes?" They probably will. But a 21-year-old is approached by a 15, 16-year-old, say, "Will you buy him a pack of cigarettes?" And I think a 21-year-old, "Yeah, I don't think so. We have other laws in this state. You can't buy beer until you're 21. You can't go to the casino, a state-run casino in the state of Kansas, until you're 21. You can buy a firearm, but you cannot concealed carry in the state of Kansas until you're 21." And that's a constitutional right. That's the Second Amendment, right there in your face. But you cannot concealed carry a weapon in the state of Kansas until you're 21. So, you know, there's a constitutional right that the government has stepped in and said you can't do, and I don't see this necessarily as a constitutional right, but I believe that we need to take this to a vote. And I asked the other commissioners, "Let's take it to a vote next week, and we'll stand up and be counted." Thank you.
Well, once again, I think the last time we met, I brought up my opinion of this. One of the things I have to bring up, the health issue. Again, we all understand that this is bad for your health. We all understand this. I went through the CDC numbers as well as the Census Bureau's. All our numbers on tobacco usage for both minors and adults have been dropping drastically for the last 50 years. 50 years ago, over 45, 43.8% smoked, adult smoked cigarettes. That number's down to 17.8% as of 2013. When we had the chart up there of 3,800 minors try cigarettes a day, that's not the ones who actually smoked daily, as the number showed up there was 21. Mathematically, going by a year, you're looking at under a million kids, and I know I say under, it may sound like a lot, but when you stop and consider that 23% of our overall population is minors, you're looking at over 75 million minors. So when you have less than a million that are getting involved in smoking, statistically speaking, that is a very small amount. Normally, when the country, when our states, when our cities want to make laws, it's usually when we have a problem that is escalating. And we want to make speeding laws because we have more accidents happening on streets. We want to make, the reason why the drinking laws were changed, we had a lot of minorities get involved with alcoholism, traffic accidents, we wanted to reduce these. In this situation, the numbers are all coming down, so there's no reason to interfere with another law. Now, I do understand the hookah use is going up, but I think that what the young lady, Van Eubank, said actually was probably one of the smartest things. The way these kids are getting it, and the way that people are stopped using these things is through education. The last 50 years, our smoking has dropped due to our education on it. I think if we continue the education and include hookahs and vapors in that education, we can continue to get those numbers to drop. On the bigger issue, or simpleton issue, if you will, whenever I hear any government entity coming at me saying, "We're going to make a law for your health," two things pop into my head. One is you're going to try to protect me from myself. As an adult, that's nobody's business of mine. We as adults are to protect our children, our own children. I don't need a government entity telling me as an adult, "I need to be protected from myself." The second thing I hear is the old bad words that I keep in my mind, "We're here from the government, and we're here to help you." That never rings out good. If we open the door to changing the laws on a health issue only, what's the next city commissioner up here going to do when you have people that are against red meat, when you have people that are against pork, when you have people that are against other items, all for the health issues? Let me just close out by saying this. Though I do appreciate the statistics from the other cities, though I do appreciate the statistics from the hospitals and health organizations, I do not work for them. I'm a simple guy. I've had jobs doing many different things, and the one thing I've always found is, you always find out who your boss is, and you never make your boss mad. We have been listening tonight from our bosses. We've been listening from our taxpayers, our voters, our constituents here in Leavenworth. They're watching us on TV, they're here in the audience. These are the people that put us on these seats. These are the people we work for. Since those are the people that are here and I'm willing to listen to, I say we kill this thing tonight, and that's my opinion of it.
Lisa?
Okay. Well, a lot of information to go through on this, and to me, it's not a write-in. It is really a health issue. To rely on the government to be consistent, you know, the inconsistency and the age factor is all over the place for me. To me, this is really more of a health issue on this, and I think we would be buried under the weight of statistics that emphasize how bad this is and how no one should be doing this, and even the people that have contacted me, many of them here tonight, that the one thing that they do is, "Shouldn't have never started," you know, "Shouldn't be smoking," you know, on that. And what keeps coming back to me is comparing it to other types of things, the drinking age on that, too. We do impose a lot of things on, the government does, on, and that, so I don't really feel like I'm overstepping my bounds as far as the government. It's a safety issue, too. We have health laws all over the place in our city that we enforce, in restaurants, in traffic violations and that. Yes, we do tell you how fast you can drive. We do tell you many things on that. It's, you know, in food service, we inspect restaurants to protect you from health concerns on that. So that, to me, is part of what I'm here to do, is to protect the public. We provide drug education to our youth, and to me, this would go hand-in-hand with that, with our drug-preventing education that we do. We also, at a very young age, tell them to not use tobacco in our DARE programs on that, so we already do start that. Do we need to expand on that? I think we do. I think where the real danger has come in is with the e-use of cigarettes. That's a new factor on the scene in use of tobacco and tobacco products on that, that's just now having effects on, like our statistics and our numbers, and maybe our progress in how we're discouraging tobacco use on that. I think that we can craft this so that it's not going to be overly burdensome to businesses and also to our community on this, but I think it's falling in line with where the future is headed, and like I said, I think we'll be addressing this issue, even if we don't do it now, ahead of it, like Jeremy had suggested, we'll be addressing this as, you know, in a matter of a few years, either way. As far as the military, you know, I think the number-one thing that people who are opposed to this, I kind of wanted, because they asked me how I felt about this, consistency about being able to go to war on that and that. Right now, the military is discouraging use on tobacco products on that, so as you do sign up for the military at 18, they are also going to be discouraging you from using tobacco products and that, because they want a healthy soldier on that, and they want to promote that lifestyle on that. So, like I said, it's coming at you from every angle on that, and I would want to be, I think, on the progressive side of this to discourage our youth, only because it's been very successful as we went through our DARE program. We addressed that issue at a younger and younger age to educate and discourage them from use later on, and that's also, it's not a silver bullet, but it has evidence that it does work, and it has turned around a lot of usage on that. I think that we're going to also, like I said, you're not going to, there's underage drinking, there's underage, there's drug use and that. It is not a silver bullet that's going to cure anything, but if it does prevent, to me, a handful of teenagers from going down this road, then I've done my job as a good public servant should do on this. So that is of the many reasons, and I'm not even listing all of them, why I think that as our community should get out in front of this.
Nancy?
Okay. I don't think we're being force-fed an agenda, Mark. The primary role of our municipal government is to provide basic services that the citizen, I'm reading this because I believe it. I mean, I read this somewhere, and I believe it. Basic services that the citizens could not do on their own, police, fire, and roads. In addition, they provide quality-of-life services such as parks and recreation, and we have, you know, we're getting hit pretty hard from the state right now, and it's going to affect all of those services, and that is important to me. My thing in coming to this point was to talk to kids between the ages of 18 and 21, which I did, and the majority of them felt like it was insulting to them to pass this, especially, "So when are you an adult? Are you an adult at 18, or are you an adult at 21?" Well, when I was 50 years ago, we could buy cigarettes out of a vending machine, so there was no issue. I mean, you know, I could buy cigarettes when I was 10-years-old. I didn't start smoking that early, but I did smoke. But it's, it's, yeah, I was in the post office today, and one thing I looked at was this right here. It says, "Do the right thing. Men 18 through 25 register for selective service." When I was 18-years-old, I fought hard to get, have 18-year-olds have the right to vote. My brother was up for the draft, my friends were up for the draft, the men were leaving in droves, being drafted at 18, and yet, we had no right to vote. And so I really pushed for that. At this point, I don't think, I mean, I started working when I was 14, so I don't think kids may be in this day and age are as mature as they were when I was 18, but that being said, I think they ought to raise the age of selective services to 21 as well. And I, right now, don't see, I don't want to put this on the agenda, and I'm fine just letting this drop for this, like, that's my opinion.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot to say about it that already hasn't been said, so I don't want to go through that again. I've talked to a lot of people, young adults, and I had the same question pop up to me that Nancy just spoke about. When do you become an adult? 18, 21, 25, 30? And it's hard to answer when you're posing a ordinance like this. But what keeps coming back in the craw on my mind, even though I do not support smoking, I wish it never had been invented, but it has, and we've got to deal with it, is I think you're all working on the wrong end, the Heart Association, everybody else on it. You need to be talking to your congressmen and your senators. Why? Because of the subsidizing. Subsidizing the tobacco growers, and you're subsidizing the manufacturers with our tax money. So if we're paying to have it done, I can't see any reason that the 18-year-old can't buy it. So I do not support that. And I'll call one more time. Is there consensus to move this to an agenda?
Yes.
Yes, and there isn't, so, yeah, so we didn't even need to call it.
I just wanted to make it official. The item is dead. Well, uh...
No, I know, yeah.
Yeah, let's take, uh, seven and a half.
Seven and a half? Seven and a half, okay.
Jerk it out, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Move in here.
Yeah, you just got to order that salt again before the snow falls, you know.
No, they don't care about the rest. Oh, I've heard it, well.
He said, "Are you ready?" I said, "No." Five minutes, five minutes break.
Okay, everybody ready?
Yeah.
We're back in.
Five minutes, five minutes break.
Okay, everybody ready?
Yeah.
We're back in session. The next agenda item is the neighborhood revitalization area. Paul?
Julie Hurley, your city planner, will handle this up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The statute establishes the neighborhood revitalization area provision. And that's to allow municipalities to provide tax rebates to property owners that make improvements on their properties. The goal is to improve the overall appearance of the community. And the end result would be that, and we have enhanced overall property value because we're incentivizing property owners to make improvements to their property. The city of Leavenworth currently has two such NRA districts. The first was originally established in 1996 and goes from the Missouri River West to 10th Street and from Metro Avenue on the north down to Spruce Street on the south. And there's a map of that. This is got it out in your packet. The second that we established last year includes just one property that's commonly known as the Benday Lofts. We do have inter-local agreements in place for both of those between the city, the county, and the school district. And so property taxes paid to those taxing jurisdictions for properties in those areas that are eligible for the rebate, those property taxes paid on the improvement are then rebated back to the property owner for a period of time that's based upon the total value of the improvements that they've made. So staff has been approached by Green and Meyer Rentals about the possibility of adding another NRA district. Another two specific properties that they're interested in developing. The first is located at 2604 Second Avenue. And that one is a 4.8-acre lot. It's right on Second Avenue, just north of Lemon Street, just north of the West Star property.
Do you have that highlighted?
I do. It's the, and I can.
I couldn't tell which one. It's the little square, okay.
That is that one. And that's my computer. It will catch up in just a minute.
Right across from the fire station.
Yeah, across from the.
Right across from the fire station. Yep, just north of West Star. And the other one is located at 300 Santa Fe Street. It's commonly known as the Helmer Building. Basil's is located in that. And that would potentially be converted into apartment buildings. And my internet is not going to catch up with me. But at any rate, the commission had considered this potential NRA district back in October. And so staff is just bringing it forward again for discussion before we move fully into developing the plan. And what was discussed at that time was making the district larger than just these two potential lots. And it was based off of two census tracts. And we just had pitched the two census tracts at the time because that's a fairly easy way to get demographic information and economic type information for a large area. And that would be the red area that you can see if they're outlined. And you've got a map in your packet as well. So the area that had been discussed includes quite a bit of residential as well as some commercial along Fourth Street. So prior to moving forward with this, we just wanted to have some discussion about how large we want the potential district to be, if you would want it to be that large. Those two overall census tracts, that's going to include, I've got it in here, they would include a total of 868 properties, both residential and commercial. Right now, the total current appraised value of that area is about $135 million. Or there'd be the option of doing something similar to what you did with the Benday project and just placing an NRA district over the two properties in question. Or we can sort of redraw the boundaries, make it a little bit smaller. And, you know, we've got a lot of flexibility. So just wanted to have a little bit more discussion on what direction you might want to go with that forward move ahead with getting a plan finalized and looking at our local agreement with the other taxing jurisdictions.
Julie, is there, I guess Jeremy could answer this, too. Have you seen any plans? Is there a timeline on any, either one of these properties?
Jeremy could let you know if there's a timeline on either of them. We've had some more specific discussions about the property on Second. I'm not sure what his potential timeline might be, but we have had some more specific discussions about that property.
Well, see, I was curious. I was curious because we did, I forgot what we did to the property up at Seneca and Third, and it's still sitting there vacant. And the last time we did something, you said you was ready to move on it and hadn't seen anything done.
Well, are you speaking about the Third and Seneca?
Yeah.
Project? Well, Tire Town happened, is what happened, which I think is good for the community, but competing against 186 other.
Well, Tire Town was, that was on the drawing board long before you approached this on Seneca.
I know, the Tire Town project, I think, I think their interest in the project was in 2006, probably.
It's been a good 10 or 11 years.
Right. So if there was, and I'm having to go.
Right, I understand.
But if anything's going to kind of call you off of a project, it's going to be having to compete with that many new units within, you know, less than a quarter mile. And just so everyone's sure, for these two sites we've identified here, it's less to do with a specific project and more to do with just preparing these sites for a project. In our experience, well, not just our experience, but I say the experience of most people in our situations, when it comes to selling, developing, co-developing these projects, people don't want a project that you bring to them and say, "Hey, I've got this great idea, but we've got to do this and we've got to do that. And then a year from now, we'll be ready to go." And in the case of the Helmers Building, which is where we're located currently, back in 2009, we got it put on the state and federal historic register so that it would be applicable for historic rehab tax credits. And that was six years ago. And that was just kind of doing the legwork. So when something comes up, we're ready to go. And I look at this as the same thing. We've, I've toured the building two or three times with other folks, but even if they were ready to go today, where the heck do we go? We've got 180,000 square foot of building.
Right.
With stuff in it and employees and customers know where we're located. And same thing with the other building, the 4.8 acres. It is literally just a lot. So any of the savings that come off of this property tax abatement is going to do nothing but fund the extension of roads, curb gutters, sewers, things like that. So this is, these programs are great. And we've done, I was, I think, at last count, probably 10 or 12, maybe more, projects within a neighborhood revitalization area, specifically because they were in a neighborhood revitalization area. And just a few of them will bring up them. The First Command Building and Fourth Metropolitan was in the NRA. The building, and that's been 12, 12 years ago. So it's been on the full tax valuation for years. The old Pizza Hut Building, I think we've got like four years left. But that building, I think, is valued somewhere around 3/4 of a million dollars. That'll be full tax pretty soon. Building at Seventh and Pawnee, I think it's $250,000, $300,000. Same deal on those, a couple other duplexes that I can think of. So, I mean, truly, people make the decision on where to develop when incentives like this are in place. But there's no, I can't show you a set of plans that say, you know, here's what we want to do. I will say also, just beyond, I would be advocating for the expansion of this district, even if we have no properties in there, just by virtue of the lack of inventory along Fourth Street and the cost that comes along with assembling property and tearing, and demolishing property and extending new services. There is almost no property ready to go in Leavenworth for facilities looking for commercial space on K-7, which is about the only phone calls you get from out-of-town developers.
Yeah, well, there's just not too much room there either unless you buy and tear it down.
Right. But when you buy and tear down, that costs.
Right, I understand.
That costs money. So even if, you know, the shape of this is, I guess, kind of arbitrary to what we're discussing, but I would encourage you, whether our buildings are under or not, at least pick an area that could be a growth area and that could get some restaurants, some shops, some offices on K-7 in an area like this, whether we're under or not.
On your lot on Second Avenue.
Yes.
I could see doing that lot. I don't know why we would want to expand the areas larger than we have. Is there a particular reason?
Well, and the thought behind that would be that it would incentivize not only commercial redevelopment like Jeremy's talking about, but including residential areas in that. Residential property owners would be eligible for that if they were to make improvements or additions to their home that would increase the appraised value. I know other cities use that in residential areas and have had some success with that in bringing more property values to neighborhoods. Jeremy has some experience, too.
Well, did you mention, or maybe I'm making something up, the census tracts that you chose, were these considered depressed census tracts? Or were these just census tracts?
These are, these two census tracts both had over 50% low-income income. So they are lower-income areas. Whether we call them depressed or, why did we haven't gone so far as to look into it that much?
I'd call them maybe lower-income.
Right.
I would not say.
Yeah, see, that's, and I'm really glad you brought that up because I was like, looking at, you know, this is a nice distinct boundary. You know, and you're looking at the lopsided star here. I was beginning to wonder how on earth you came up with this.
The census through those lines. I followed my internet.
And it is two census tracts.
Two census tracts together.
And I knew that, I was hoping there would be a nice logical reason for that on that. But the problem I have, though, is it's a revitalization district. And to do vacant land, which is the Second Avenue property, that's not exactly, to me, the true purpose of revitalization. Although I, that's just a little heartburn on that one. I can see for the Helmer Building, that's a big revitalization project. And at least doing something similar for that, what we did with Benday on that. And then even with the census tract, there are, I just kind of went around, drove around and looking at, you know, the different areas. Lot of them do have that. They're smaller homes. They could use the benefit of reinvestment and incentives for people to do that. But honestly, if we use that as a criteria, you're expanding this territory a lot bigger than. There are big chunks of neighborhoods that would also benefit from that, that really that we're missing, too, in this. So that you're talking, you know, big boundaries, except maybe some that are, you know, way to the south that are, you know, within the last 20, 30 years, excluding those on that. So I've got just a little bit, like with targeting, and I, and for some of the other areas that are missed there, and it's just a little, I don't even know which direction I'm looking at. But at the top here of it, where you've got, you know, Marshall Street and Vine and, you know, up above there, you know, a lot of reinvestment is, you know, needed in that area, too, not knowing what the income levels and, you know, the disparity. But I don't really think that there's going to be like a lot of big difference in the income levels compared to the area that you've targeted there, too.
And we, like I said, we can draw the boundaries however we want.
Yeah, there are, just, yeah, there are just, yeah, pockets everywhere. I mean, you could just pretty much do the entire city as a revitalization. Area, you know, on that, so.
Hi, Dad. I think you're right. I think this solution is addressing two different issues. One is creating a district for this specific development, which we've talked to Jeremy about, or the two developments. The other one, we thought, well, let's cast a wider net and then bring in some residential. I think that's a whole different discussion. I know we've had discussions at budget sessions and at goal-setting about doing a citywide program for tax abatement for making improvements at your house. Sort of, you'd almost have to pick every census tract that had over 50%, you know, qualifier in the city for equity purposes. So if you're going to do that, maybe you look at a whole different project for citywide tax abatement on home improvements. But you probably are crossing two different priorities by looking at two individual projects and then saying, "Okay, well, then we'll grab some residential areas, too."
And I want to note, if, in tying it to a specific property or properties, what was done on the Benday project was that there was a timeline to put on that and that a building permit had to be issued in a certain timeframe for that tax rebate to be effective. So when you're tying it to specific properties, you can do something like that as well and discuss a timeframe for when you would expect to see some development take place in order for it to be valid.
And honestly, I would be in favor of that, Jeremy, because, only because you've come before, and we've granted stuff, and then nothing has happened. And I would at least like that time limit as an incentive for you to pull the trigger and do the project.
Well, if there's going to be, if there's going to be a time limit, I mean, it's, at this point, it's impossible to.
Good, Jeremy.
It's impossible to say. So I, I mean, if there's going to be a time limit, I would say, you know, take our specific properties out of it and just consider it on its own merits.
Have you purchased the property yet, or is?
Oh, we've owned both these.
Okay. Well, I knew the Helmers Building.
Yeah. Yeah, the other one we bought back in 2006, back at the Hyatt Market, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a timeline that is necessarily burdensome. It could be something along the lines of five years.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't talking six months, yeah.
And if it doesn't happen within five years and it happens in six, seven, eight, you can do it then. But this allows Jeremy the, sort of the safeguard that he has that in place, should he decide to do it. But then, at the same time, if nothing happens, it'll go away and then it'll come back.
Well, and even, Jeremy, if you didn't do it and you sold the property, those benefits go with the next property owner, too, you know. So if you weren't able to do it, I mean, they would still be attracted for someone else to carry a project forward, too.
Well, I appreciate what you guys are saying in extending, you know, a longer timeline. However, there's still the issues of the other properties that are along K-7 that I really think is the next area of expansion. The phone calls I get are, people want something between Eisenhower and Limb. Good luck.
Yeah.
So to me, that kind of limit to Marion is the next area to go. And, but you're asking people to assemble half dozen houses and tear them down. And that kind of blows up the purchase price of the land.
And I thought about your, the property over on Seneca. That was, you bought that when we were really heavy into the revitalization plan, Northeast Revitalization Plan. And I've talked to Paul about this before, but I think pretty soon, we're going to get together and revisit our revitalization plan, revisit our comprehensive plan. I hope so, with the approval of the mayor, but I hope so. And in that case, we need to discuss some of these things.
Yeah. Well, believe me, I wish, I wish there was an opportunity to have done something there because we bought two structures and tore them down, two income-producing structures. That's not the, that's not how a sane person operates a property management company. So one of them, we owned it like a month and tore it down. That's just terrible, was a terrible decision. So I wish there was something there as well.
Mr. Mayor. I'm definitely in favor of doing these NRA's because there's, I don't think there's potential loss in us. I mean, somebody used the anecdote, Third and Seneca, you haven't done anything. Well, are you still paying taxes on it? We haven't lost any taxes.
I understand.
So the taxes stay like that.
He had a lot of people in Leavenworth looking.
Yeah. And we could do these other ones that, you know, if that's on the table, if somebody wants to develop and they do get a tax break for five years, 10 years, whatever it might be, and the property taxes will be lost, but we'll have people employed building to maybe new residents and things like that. I think this is, it's always a good place.
I'm not opposing.
No, I'm not saying you.
No.
I'm just saying that I, I think these, this is good for the long-term growth of the city in picking out these certain census, and I trust you, the way you picked out these census tracts, that, because if nothing happens, the taxpayers in the city haven't lost. But if something happens, everyone gains. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a downside to it, unless I'm missing something.
The only downside I can see, and I'll talk to Jeremy more about this and some of the real estate people in the community, is, take, for example, Buffalo Wild Wings. Had we done something along the Fourth Street corridor to put in an NRA, they didn't come to my office and ask for incentives. They, I don't know if they. They, I don't know if they didn't need them, they didn't want them, they didn't want to go through those hoops. If we had an NRA in certain sections of Fourth Street, that means that they would have automatically gotten 10 years of 95% property tax abatement just because it's in place. That doesn't stop anybody from coming to my office and then me to bring to you an incentive package. And it doesn't mean that we don't target maybe certain areas of Fourth Street that have a higher site development cost based on what's there. But it does matter in commercial areas, I think, to be a little more discriminant on how we employ these type of areas that have large boundaries rather than that are specific to projects.
Yeah.
Both of these projects are proposed, and obviously nothing's, you know, etched in concrete, but they're for residential, correct?
Yeah.
And can you write it in such a way that you have it if it is residential? And I don't know if that's too big a handcuffs, but I mean, that, you know, 35 or 40 townhomes, that means, you know, another 100 people. And the one on, I don't know, the Helmer Building, apartments, maybe 20 apartment, I don't know how many, what it would be, but that would be people as opposed to a retailer that gets, you know, a tax break for 10 years. And that, the purpose is, you know, ultimate purpose is maybe grow the population, more money for those, the people that would live in there would spend more money in the community.
Well, I agree, I understand what you're saying. I just, you've got to be aware of the underlying zoning as well because doing it for just residential, but the future use plan on Fourth Street is commercial, then you've kind of created a conflict.
I don't believe if you draw, if you create an area that you can exclude a specific use or tie about, have to read the statute a little bit more, but I don't believe you can do that.
Okay, okay.
I could be wrong, but...
Yeah.
Another fact under consideration is it's property taxes of the city, the county, and the school district. We're coming up at the end of 2016, and the city commission's going to have to decide whether they want to try to renew the NRA that's in place right now from the River to 10th, Metropolitan and Spruce. We may be off for that. I don't know with a lot of state funding and a lot of stuff in play, if there's going to be so much acceptance from those other entities to potentially give away taxes on the building.
Yeah, I think that in timing right now, what is happening in Tefeco with revenue shortfall is continuing to happen or probably continuing to happen, I can't speak to the school board or for the county. But can you do an NRA that's not 95%? Can you do an NRA of 30%? Can we arbitrarily pick something? Or is it 95 or nothing? Yeah, 95 or nothing?
No, you can, we can dictate how much it is. Benday is getting 50%. So, we can dictate how much that rebate would be.
Well, a lot of it too is dictated by the dollar amount of investment too.
But I mean, can, we said, yeah, do the NRA, it's not 95% tax abatement, it's 30%, 50%, whatever, we can select that.
You can, yes.
Well, and just as an example, the City of Lansing has a progressive property tax abatement, but I think an investment of, and I'm sure I'm saying this wrong, but zero to half a million, you might get five years of full and that's it. Happening to a million and a half, it's, you know, five years of full and then you're six through 10, it goes down. And then you have to get into like 3 million plus or 2 million plus before you get the full 10 years, just as another option.
Sure.
And in that way, you kind of keep, you're incenting the big stuff.
So, you can structure it really however...
And all three entities have to approve it or it dies. You can't, can two approve it and one says you still pay full water?
And then it would just be those two entities that approved it being abated.
Okay, it's not all three or not, okay.
What about making two districts instead of one large one? That way, we could keep Fourth Street out of the middle of it.
We can do that if you wanted to just try and keep it to residential areas if you wanted that to be...
And I understand what he's saying, but we've got to find room out there that we can make it worthwhile and do one on it. And again, like Paul said, you know, had it been known we'd lost the tax on Buffalo, Buffalo Wild Wings, but, and I understand that's why it's there. But if we could do two, two separate districts and cut the one district down a little bit, I think we need to, or whatever the commission wants, but that would take care of him and...
We could look at drawing a few different boundary options up and bringing it back for another study session and have you look at a few different options.
I think that would be pretty much all.
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, I would honestly prefer that only because, like I said, I'm really torn. Like I said, if it's really a revitalization, because I, like I said, I would not want to miss an opportunity like we had on Fourth Street. But there are some areas of Fourth Street that are tougher, that are just, I mean, and I would rather maybe take a scalpel approach rather than the scattergun approach.
And we could, like you said, if someone did come to us and say, we need incentives, we're going to build on Fourth Street, obviously we can still consider that.
For a specific project, that's easier to deal with, yeah.
Buffalo Wild Wings didn't ask for anything.
I love them.
I have to go there.
Neither did soon-to-be-opened Nail Salon north of Limson. They would be in this NRA, and they would have, I'm sure they put a million dollars into that.
What about the building in front of Price Shopper?
No.
Yeah, they wouldn't be in it.
But honestly, if it's not, if it's...
They would have lost the property tax on it.
My business was on this list and just, you know, and we're in, and I think we're either in the five or the six year in dollars and cents with that, you know, based on your, and I don't even remember what the dollar limit that we had on there was, but it's a $200 check for, just to give my business as an example, but that's a $200 rebate check, you know? It pays the utility bill, you know? The bigger the project, the more you're going to benefit from it obviously, you know, which is why the Helmer Building would be ideal for it, but, you know, but like I said, over the long-term, like I said, like a significant investment, Buffalo Wild Wings or a new building going up, that's, you know, I...
Well, I think the first one...
You know, we also have to think of the tax dollars that we're generating too, and we're just as hard-pressed as any of the other entities are.
As I started to say, the first one, if I recall correctly, that we did on an NRA in Leavenworth was the Henry Martin Building.
Which what, Larry?
Was the Henry Martin.
Oh, downtown.
Downtown, to get them out of Lansing and brought them down, and that's been very successful.
Hampton used it. They didn't come to the city manager's office for it. They just used the NRA.
Any other questions or anything else you need this evening?
No, Paul dropped some boundary options, I'll bring that back for more discussion.
Okay, thank you. Item number three is the demolition process.
Julie Hurley will continue on this item with assistance from Tom Dawson if you need it.
In talking with Attorney Dawson and just going over some of our standard operating procedures for the Community Development Department, we discussed the fact that there are some current state statutes that more specifically address demolitions and dangerous structures that we don't currently reference in our adopted code of ordinances. And so, the recommendation from Attorney Dawson was just that we reference those state statutes in the ordinance to really bring the ordinance into line with what the state statutes dictate. So, that's been in just what we're proposing. So, we, currently, we do reference, let's see, Statute 12-1750, Statute 17-4759 addresses in some more detail the process for dealing with dangerous structures, and the recommendation will be that we incorporate that by reference to bring us into line. So, the notable changes to our standard operating procedure that we currently follow would be a requirement that property owners wishing to repair a structure that's been identified as a dangerous provided structure, they would have to provide bids and a scope of work for the repairs necessary to bring that structure into performance with city ordinances and then provide proof of funds needed to complete those repairs in a timely manner. And then additionally, we would be including specific criteria for commissioners to consider when evaluating whether or not to grant extensions for property owners requesting such, give a little bit more guidance, and that can sometimes be a challenge when they're coming forward to you all. And then we would also change the form that our code enforcement officers use when they're evaluating those structures before they, before we can bring them forward to you. And that form, I've included it in your packet, the language that we would, philosophy to the packet, we would take the language straight out of the Kansas statutes, and that's what they would use in evaluating those structures. Right now, the criteria we use is more just kind of based off some property maintenance codes and regulations that we have within the city, but we would just bring our standard evaluation into line with Kansas statutes so that we're staying consistent across the board when we're evaluating these from our first step all the way through the commission variance. So, that is what we've got, and really what staff is looking for is consensus to amend Article 10 Dangerous Structures as a City Code of Ordinances to reference KSA 17-4759, and I have included that statute in your packet. Any other questions?
No, I approve of the changes that you've presented. I think they're a good direction to head into, so I'm for them.
Is there a consensus to approve? Do you have a consensus?
I have a question.
Sure.
How do you determine, as mayor of this, how do you determine air pollution?
Is that in the statute or...
That is on the Kansas list.
It's on the list.
Well, you know, that is one of the criteria in the statute, and I'm guessing that would be something that we would deal as we encounter it. I don't, I can't think off the top of my head that we've had any structures that we put on a demolition list that had air pollution issues. I would think that that might be...
I just wondered how you'd measure that, how, what is air pollution?
Yeah, and that might be something more in line with if we were looking at doing commercial structures that have some sort of, you know, residual environmental issues.
Old industrial sites.
Right, right. Other municipalities do commercial structures with their demolition program, unified government. We visited them to talk about their procedure, and they do a lot of commercial as well. So, I think that something like that would be more in line. I can't see that we'd have that applying to too many of those structures.
Right, thanks.
We've had one in the past, and it's only because it was a commercial property that was like we have, it was mixed in with residential. It's just one in the past.
I might just add, this doesn't really change anything. The statute just includes all the criteria in one document. And what I've had to live with in the past is all these same criteria, but they're in like 40 different cases. Well, the legislature put it all in one place, so why not just do that?
Sounds good. Thank you, Julie.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners have anything else?
No.
If not, we stand adjourned.